Fire service and emergency services in our town and just the area in general dealing with the financial and volunteer issues that we're having across the board. And so we wanted to try and just get everybody in a room and kind of work through some ideas and dispel any myths or rumors and just see what people had to say. You know, the journey of a thousand miles starts with just one step and hopefully this is the first step in kind of addressing a lot of the same issues that you guys are dealing with and just see what we can come up with. We'd ask that you just keep the sidebar conversations to a minimum just because the acoustics in here are absolutely atrocious. And we plan on having ample time for public comment. We want to hear what everybody else has to say. And we want to, like I said, just, you know, there's no bad ideas, no bad viewpoints here. We're just trying to get everybody's opinion considered and see what people think. So just as a background, how we got here, in two thousand, twenty twenty-one, we realized that we're getting a lot of calls for our department responding to other towns. And as a selectman, I was just curious what, how that was happening and how we ended up there. And, you know, we had some ideas and we did task the chief with coming up with, you know, some potential solutions. And one of those was looking at doing regionalization, where we kind of combined resources with, you know, multiple communities, bringing them together and, you know, working on our problem together. And that's kind of why we're here today. But on that note, I would hand it over to, I'm sorry, Perry Plummer. Perry Plummer from the Seco's Chiefs, and he had a letter he wanted to read.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Perry Plummer. I'm the executive director for the Seco's Fire Chiefs and in full disclosure, I'm the interim fire chief from Rochester right now for a short period of time. But I, our organization did send a letter to the, to the board and to the chief and we just, I just wanted to quickly read it. If you're a member of Seco's Chiefs, you probably got this in your email last night. If not, I have a bunch of copies if anybody wants one. The Seco's Chiefs are mutual aid district, represents firefighters and EMS providers from forty-six communities throughout southeast coastal New Hampshire, northern Essex County in Massachusetts and southern Maine. We've been made aware of the discussions pursuant to exploration of regionalizing fire departments surrounding the Kingston area. The concept of regionalization in the fire service has been around for years and it has had some successes and failures. Our association in and of itself is a successful form of regionalization that has stood the test of time, serving multiple communities since nineteen seventy-four. In such, issues such as tight budgets, difficulty hiring employees, reduced volunteer ranks, and the desire to save money during uncertain economic times has prompted the many communities to investigate sharing resources and assets, which the fire service has done well for years through mutual aid agreements. Regionalization may yield some solid results for that, for those who navigate the process successfully, but the fact remains that regionalization has challenges that should be thoroughly investigated, understood, and discussed with local fire chiefs to address the roots, questions of why, if, and how to regionalize. Regionalization is a concept that may be worth exploring if conditions exist that would benefit a group of communities in providing better service to its citizens. Having an inclusive, transparent, well-thought-out process conducted by experienced consultant or knowledgeable professionals would go a long way to accepting the outcome no matter what it may be. The hope of our mutual aid district is that the process includes all the stakeholders that might be affected and is conducted in a pace that gives opportunity to garner all the facts, highlights, pros and cons, and establishes the path forward that enhances public safety. The Seco's Chiefs Fire Office's mutual aid district encourages open, honest, and transparent communication from all, for our members and the citizens they serve with pride. Yours truly, David F. Manuel, President of Seco's Fire Chiefs. Thank you for allowing me to do this. And there is copies here if anybody wants one.
Okay. So one of the things I notice as an outsider is, you know, when there's a structured fire, there's no shortage of people to respond. With our volunteer ranks, everybody shows up and, you know, surrounding towns step right up to help each other out. What's been the, kind of the thorn in our side is, you know, the seven PM call for difficulty breathing or, you know, the one AM call for chest pains and there's one person in the firehouse and, you know, obviously you can't dispatch ambulances with one person. You know, as I just mentioned, this is a pretty old concept, this, you know, with regionalizing, but the devil's in the details and how do we make it work? How do we combine our, our strengths to make us all stronger and get us faster releases? You know, some of the big things that we look at is the volunteer ranks, you know, a lot of, everybody, a lot of you guys have, you know, what we have call-based systems, call-based units. In our town, we're having an issue getting people to come out consistently and reliably. Another thing is cost, you know, having to keep these ambulances full of stock, the trucks full of stock. And obviously the price of fuel is not helping any of that right now. The big thing I want to address though is, you know, this is not an attempt to take over anyone's department or, you know, subvert any current chiefs or any power structure or anything like that. This is really just a look at combining our resources so that we can, we're all nailed to the same problem, so how can we capitalize? As a group, you know, there's an example of many towns in this area got together and went to waste management and requested that they get their tipping fees reduced. As a block of six, seven towns, they were able to get their tipping fees substantially reduced per ton. So how could we kind of take that model of everybody getting together and apply that? So instead of buying five stock tanks, you're buying fifty and you're getting it, you know, a cheaper price that way. Some people have kind of tried this, attempted to do this. It hasn't been successful and more than anything, we just want to find out why and what we can do to make it work. So.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
All that everybody's going to wait for me does not necessarily get out of the way right now. Ed Warren, East Kingston. Couple of things I just wanted to bring up. Regionalization, very open to the concept, problems were not geared for it in this area. Regionalization, the reason it hasn't happened before, it's been tried many times, is towns have to give up control. If you go to a district, then the district is in charge and towns will lose control. They may not want that to happen, but it's going to happen. Couple of things you mentioned that I just wanted to point out, you said that there's no shortage of firefighters, when there's a fire, everybody shows up. That's not true. Twenty-five years ago, if I needed fifteen to twenty people on a fire round back call, my, my town Kingston, maybe one other town, and I'd have one with enough people. If I need thirty people now, I've got to get ten towns in because your average town is only sending three or four, they're not sending out with the volume that they used to. That's why there's so many trucks on the scene because you need the bodies. So it's not like, you may, it may be more visible because you have bigger equipment and more activity, but you're going, stretching out further to get the bodies. And you looked at twenty twenty-one, I personally, and this is Ed Warren speaking, this isn't, I'm not speaking for anybody else, I think the last two years cannot be used as a benchmark for anything. With COVID, with all the push, I mean, the state was pushing really hard to have the vaccine sites populated more than the fire station populated. You had to get the vaccines out as much as humanly possible, get as many people vaccinated as quick as possible. Doesn't matter whether you agreed with it or not, that was the big push. So everybody's working these vaccine sites, whether they were the National Guard, with the schools, I've worked a ton of them myself, I had a ton of people working them myself. So yeah, that did cut down on some availability for calls, but that was an acceptable thing because it was temporary and everybody knew it. We do do regionalization to a certain extent now, there's a lot of automatic mutual aid. Kingston has a great job of automatic mutual aid with Brownwood and Blastow and up and down the one twenty-five border, mutual aid is already there. The other thing that happened with the COVID is there were some people that, in the call and volunteer section, got hit harder than the full-time departments, I think, because a lot of the call people, the volunteer people, were so afraid of COVID, especially in the beginning, they didn't come out to call it out, they were afraid to get COVID and bring it home to their families. So I don't think you're doing anybody, any town, any justice by looking at twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one for activity and mutual aid calls and who's helping who. It's, I just don't think it's a fair comparison. If you look before that or after that, I think it's much more equitable than it was. And the state does right now recognize that there are recruitment issues, there's retention issues. We've worked really hard to do it, we've got videos out there, I'm doing very well right now, and I've got another set of mailings going out by the end of this week because you can never get complacent with the members that you have. Let's face it, we all know the smaller the department, we are supplying people for the full-time departments, we just are. It's just, we bring them on board, we, we do whatever we have to do, whether it be the background checks, the physicals, put them through Fire One, Fire Two, EMT, and as soon as they get their certifications, they're looking to go someplace else, so they're jumping on board with the postman for Hampton and Exeter or whoever. And I'm actually proud of that. I can, I can name a dozen or two members that were on my department that are now full-time in other departments. To me, that's saying we're doing it right and we're, we're saddling them off on the right foot. My concern is, I've printed up articles from every agency, from fire engineering to fire houses to all the articles that you find, Nationwide, NFPA. It's a known problem and it's, but to do this and every single article talks about, if there's a problem, the area fire chiefs get together, discuss the problem, come up with a solution long before any board of selectmen or any outside agency is involved. It should go from the fire chiefs up, not from anybody else down. So if that wants to stop the ball rolling?
Can I respond then real quick? I mean, I certainly understand the COVID concern, but prior to that, I mean, in my talks to people who were volunteer firemen and no longer are, prior to that, it was the opioid thing, you know? As one guy said to me, he's like, I'm not getting up at two, two in the morning to go revive a John for the fifth time that week, you know? I mean, there's, there's a draw on.
And I would question that person's integrity of his judgment because I'm not a god, I'm not here to judge you, I'll go to you five times in a row if I have to, that's not my place to judge you.
I just think that there's, across the board, there is a volunteer, there's not as many people volunteering.
Absolutely.
And that's not just the fire service, that's that museum over there, you know, the Kingston Days Committee, whatever it is, people don't want to volunteer like they used to. The difference with the fire service is there's a huge commitment of capital and training and those things that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and I've had this discussion with my selectmen before, you know, I'm paying hundreds if not thousands of dollars for people through firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT, A, paramedic, and usually within a year or two, they go on to another department because they're looking for a full-time career. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm saying that's reality, it's always been that way and I do not see that changing any day. We don't want to put people in a building if they're not certified and somebody are not trained, so we're going to have to train them. And if the person loves the fire service, they're looking to go someplace where they can get full-time benefits and a career retirement, I don't blame them. So that's just a reality of what we are paying the bulk of the firefighter, the call and volunteer departments are paying the bulk of the training in the state for people to get their status degree. It's just reality. Don't like it, I really wish I didn't do it. I mean, I've even talked to attorneys about, can I get a commitment to say, you know, if I pay for your paramedic, I'm going to get you for seven years or you're going to pay it back. Attorneys all say the same thing, and our attorney's the same one as you have in Kingston. You can put that in writing, but it's not forcible.
No, and I can tell you, I mean, we do that with our police officers because it's the same thing, we're a diploma.
Right, it's not forcible.
It was, we spent all our lawyer fees to get the lawyer fees back.
So it's, it's just the reality of the situation that we're in. Now, could we do our mutual aid system better, more efficiently? I think, I think there's a lot we can do and I have a number of ideas, but I'm not going to waste everybody's time with that. I think I'd like to hear from everybody else who knows.
Good afternoon, for those that do not know me, John Albedino. Newton. I think there's only one other brother in this room that came from a fire district region that can give you the pros and cons, okay? One thing that you had mentioned was your EMS responding to mutual aid. The runs were up there. I can tell you just as much as Kingston comes out, Kingston receives, so it's a give and take. I will tell you this from my perspective, and I've already talked to a few of the chiefs, a lot of the chiefs in this room, what scares me is there are several communities in this room right now that have a private ambulance company at no cost to the town administration. What is that ambulance company going to do when we have two more years left in the contract and they know we are sitting in this room having this discussion? Who's going to take care of our towns if that ambulance contractor decides to now charge the town or decides that we're going to walk away? You're, you're in negotiation, you're talking about regionalization, you're going to be leaving us, so why don't we leave first? Is Kingston going to take care of Newton? If the private ambulance company walks out?
This is just open discussion with everyone.
I, I understand that, chief, but again, there are some of us in this room that rely on that private ambulance company to take care of us.
I mean, I would say if they're going to be vindictive on you for just exploring, you know, alternatives.
It's not a contract.
Right, and you're not violating the contract.
And we're sitting, and we're sitting down with them now to try to get us another, a third ambulance. I can tell you this, if I owned a company and I knew you were planning to possibly leave, why am I going to spend a million dollars to give you a third ambulance when you're thinking about leaving? It's business, that's all I'm saying, that's what my concern is, okay? I can tell you right now, Newton, I will never question going to mutual aid anywhere. That's our job. I've been doing this for forty-two years. We did a lot of mutual aid in forty-two years. This is the first time, forty-two years, I've heard a community say, well, we're looking into possibly regionalization because we do mutual aid to another community. That's the agreement that every community signed. That's all I'm saying. See, I came from another world and these guys know where I came from, I came from another state.
Just beyond Venus.
I came from another state. That's all I'm saying.
So I, I don't want anyone to take this as like, we're carrying the load here and you guys need to step up, that's not what it is at all. I just, we're dealing with issues that need to be explored and we obviously have the right people in the room who can address the issue. I would say if it is a business, if this ambulance company you're dealing with, if this is a business relationship that you have, this is no different than us, we have waste management to pick up our trash, who are you going to talk to for sale and see if they can offer?
Big difference, with all due respect, big difference. Big difference. And I will say this, again, being probably one of the old times in here, forty-two years, this belongs with the gold badges. First, not with a selectman. I shouldn't have had to hear from my town administrator that the town of Kingston set the board of selectmen an email, that I had no idea, I looked like a fool in my town hall to find out that the town of Kingston sent the town of Newton an invite for this meeting. Should have came to the brass first. That's all I'm saying. Should have came to the brass first.
Okay?
Right, and like I said, I have pros and cons of a district, of regionalization. Okay, I have my own opinion and it might not be what other people think, but it is. Okay? And I can tell you this, for us that are part of the Sanborn School District, it's the same thing you regionalize, you're going into another school district, except it's going to be a fire district. That's all.
Speaking of what the gentleman spoke of, problem is, one of the problems is, is towns, we're cutting each other's throats, exactly what he talked about. We're spending our time and our money and investing it and training these people and then some of the bigger towns are throwing these lucrative bonuses out, enticing these people that we spent time and money to train to be of service for our towns and they're taking them away from us. The days of getting volunteers like you talked about, that's nil and none because the reality, to use your word, is this, you look at all the families today, they don't even sit down and have dinner anymore. You get the husband and wife working, then they're coming home, they're doing other things, what little bit of time they have, they're not going to take that time and invest it. We that are here are a dying breed. That is one of the major issues that needs to be addressed and dealt with, is to be able to come up with the warm bodies to stop cutting one another's throats so that we could each be able to service our own towns, which would be the ideal way to go. And then like John was saying, that we would be able to help one another when the time is needed. And then that way there financially, we could address our own needs as be. But if we keep cutting each other's throats by offering these bonuses and pulling people out of one another's towns, then it's, and point blank, it's a, is what it is.
No, and I mean, we, we've tried the Purdean thing, we started at fifteen bucks an hour. Newton's advertising for twenty dollars an hour right now. I mean, it's, it's an escalation.
But in the same company, when we did twenty, that was before Thugger Dunces did fifteen. For, for us right now in Newton, we, somebody coming off the street with zero trains at eleven seven, okay? I can tell you this, I'll sit here right now, but I have two selectmen here. It has to change. I wouldn't go into a burning building for eleven seven. There's a lot more commitment today than there was forty-two years ago, okay? And I can tell you, I, I'll keep it to myself, I'll keep it a bit.
Stephen Whitehead, Danville. I foresaw this, I've been chief in Danville since two thousand four, eighteen years. I foresaw this problem coming. You're mentioning figures for Purdean, I have Purdean helping my station right now and they are getting paid, the two members, twenty-five and twenty-six dollars an hour. I knew to get quality people in my town, I'm not trying to better anyone, I haven't stolen from anyone's roster, but I knew to retain, seeing this coming, that I had to pay for my call members that still live in town, what I do seven nights a week and Saturday and Sunday is assigned twelve-hour shifts to my call members to give them an opportunity to make a few bucks for their family. That, when I get it over a hundred dollars a shift, you should see them, they're fighting again. And once we get bumped out, they go up to their rate, which last year was turned down, or twenty-one was turned down from the budget to me. They said I was out of my mind when I was trying to give everyone a twelve percent raise. And the thing that sells them every year, and the budget turned it down, they took fifty thousand out of my budget for the raises. I went to town meeting, provided statistics, and the town meeting overwhelmingly gave me my money back for these folks. I think it's a money problem, we don't have volunteers anymore, that's for sure, we've all seen this coming for a long time. And like John just said, who's going to run into a burning building for eleven dollars? When they come into my department, I call the supporters, they have no training, they're starting at just twenty dollars an hour. I just signed up three people today. Unfortunately, my list for Purdean and I'm drawing from full-time departments, not in the area, I'm not hurting any of my neighbors, it's to the point now that I used to give the, some of the guys one shift a week, I can only give them one every two weeks because I got eleven and twelve people that are dying to come around here. So I think the selectmen, the budget committees, and the town people have to realize if they want quality people answering calls, they've got to pony up and pay for it. We do have an advantage, like John said, with a private ambulance service. If we didn't have a private ambulance service, it would be a totally different thing because someone that has to go to work the next morning doesn't want to do a two, two and a half hour ambulance call and not sleep at all and then they have to go to their regular jobs. So that's an advantage we have. Maybe regionalization countywide with an ambulance might be a way to go, but I'm here to listen to ideas, I just want to say my personnel, I was making out in Danville and I paid rates.
Well, as an idea, and I think where we can all benefit from, several months ago, a few of us, a few chiefs in the area went up to Conway, New Hampshire, and National Volunteer Firefighter Council, which is a national organization, they put on a seminar just as, and I'll be honest with you, I was very disappointed that not many towns from this area went down, Rockland County went down because I think that's where one of the things that benefited me and why my, I've kind of reversed things and have done so much better, that they talk about what you do from every small town, smaller than ours, like Newington, I think is probably population-wise the smallest town in the county, but it's also in the middle. What's that?
Newcastle's small.
Newcastle's small, but my point being is they, they talked about the smallest departments to the busiest departments and the call and volunteer, and I walked in and I did with a stack of books like this and some ideas and I've implemented, as many of them make sense, nobody can implement them all, but there are things you need to do. And he actually mentioned it, even your call guys, you, you put them on a twelve-hour or twenty-four-hour shift to kind of mimic what the full-time services are doing and much to my surprise, I said, I don't want to put them on a twenty-four-hour shift, I know they're not available during the day. Try it, you're going to find out, you're going to get some surprises. So when people know that, you know, I'm on duty tonight, I'm off tomorrow, I'm on duty the next night, then I'm off at five and it's fast over, and they have four groups, but they're all allowed to come out at any call, anytime, it's just we're counting on you on the days that you're on a duty shift, the, one of the biggest surprises I'm getting is, A, they like it, and B, there are actually people around during the day that had a day off from work or the rest, that I didn't expect to show up. I'm not looking for them just because it's a twenty-four-hour shift, I'm not expecting them during the day. My goal is to get them out at night. But much to my surprise, I'm getting them during the day because they have to be driven through, or they have a day off, or they're close enough that they can respond. So I think a setting like this is a good idea, I think we can all get brainstorm and get ideas, I just think, to reiterate, I think everything should have started with the chiefs and not gone beyond the chiefs until we were ready to go beyond the chiefs. And regionalization might actually work if it's done properly and there might be some benefit, but it has to come from the county or the state level down, not from the individual town that works its way up, it's not going to work that way.
And I agree with you, but, you know, the state and the county aren't stepping up and leading the effort on this, you know?
If they're not leading the effort or supporting the effort, there's no way it can, it can work. And what's meaning of this?
The, the other thing, I agree a hundred percent with what Ed said.
Wait, 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 wait.
It, it, it's on. State or county, we'll, we'll take the state out of it and go county. The amount of communities, the six communities, especially for our small communities from a fire district, I'll give it to you, you take your population, divide it up, and that's what you want to pay for your public safety. So that means that people in, I would use Newton, will pay for the new fire station in Newton, still pay for the burned fire station, the new fire station in Kingston, the renovation supply stop, and any of us others who gets a fire station. You would break the bank on taxes, especially for Newton with what I was told is coming down the pipe for the school. The increase that the school's asking for, you would break the bank. Now, if you get county money, that's a whole different story. That's a whole different story. And again, personally, I think the chiefs could have solved this if the chiefs all got together. Recruitment, retention, hiring, the whole kit kaboom. The whole kit kaboom. We have meetings once a month. The county has, county chiefs have a meeting once a month. The state fire chiefs have a meeting once a month. And what's good in this county is, it's a fun, whatever, you've got Massachusetts, Maine, and New Hampshire, you've got three states that can sit at the table with a brass and discuss anything. Okay, I'll be, I'll sit here and tell you, the old time, bad taste in the mouth, being blindsided at town hall. And my brothers will tell you, I wasn't coming. And my brothers will tell you, I wasn't coming. I was not coming to this meeting. That, I don't like it a blindside, this is the first time in my career, I was blindsided by another town. So, yeah. But my brothers got all the way, one time threatening, I don't wanna point in this direction. That I had to be here. And I says, I don't wanna come, I'm not gonna say nothing, I'll mind my own piece of cake. But when it gets brought up that we're here because your ambulance went to three communities, because we know the three communities, from mutual aid. Well, how many times did those communities come here? That should have been a conversation between the four communities, not everybody else. If, if that, if that's what this whole thing's about.
I mean, it is, it isn't what this whole thing is about. Like I said, it's not, I'm not here trying to point fingers or saying that we're carrying the burden here. But I'll use your example, the school district. Now, the school district is not without its problems. Obviously, you're in Newton, you know. So, at some point in time though, someone had to sit there and say, you know what, this one-room schoolhouse that we have, we're not really giving the kids the best opportunity to advance in life. And we gotta think how we can pool resources and give them the best bang for money. And that's what the intention here is, is just to get great minds together. What does the future look like? Cause what the future looks like for me is a declining population, there are more jobs and there are people. That's not gonna change. You're seeing it everywhere now. It's not, people don't wanna work, it's just there's not enough people to work. So, at eleven seventy-five, someone's not gonna run into a building. But what about when it's thirty-one dollars an hour and people don't wanna run into a building? Forty-one dollars. At what point do the budget committees say, no, we're tapped out, we can't do it anymore? We're just trying to get ideas to think long-term here. What can the future, and what, how can we make it so? We want you guys to control your own destiny. How can we get this thing kick-started to start having the conversation and strategically for the long term? How is this gonna look? And right now, I'm not saying that, it, it's not, you guys are bad, you didn't do your job. It's, we need to think about what the future looks like and.
Correct. I agree with you a hundred percent. Okay, I can tell you, I was put in a position to do what you just said. That's my job. That's my job. Just like every other chief in here, it's my job to get the recruitment, retention, mutual aid, take care of my department. It's my job. Okay? It's simple as that. That's why we increased, we were fifteen dollars for our part-time duty per day. We went to seventeen fifty, it wasn't working, we increased. That's my job. It's my job to sell to my board of selectmen, which I have two here, what my issues are, what I need. That's why, if you've noticed, when I took office in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, I was told, you're never gonna see a fire station, you're never gonna see a fire truck, you're never gonna see nothing. We've got two brand new fire trucks, a new fire station, new vehicles, and at the time, some of the highest-paid firefighters. That's my job. All right. And I, and that's it, I won't say anymore. No, I'm done. Trust me, now I'm done.
Anyone else?
Yeah, can I just say an example, throw an example on the, on the floor here? Full disclosure, Graham is my son, Bill Pellerin, former fire chief, current captain. If I am on duty tonight, okay, in Kingston, our ambulance goes on an ambulance call. So I'm the, let's say the third guy, okay, and nobody else in Kingston wants to come out. East Kingston has a guy that will come out at two o'clock in the morning. Why can't, if the call is in East Kingston, why can't I go over to East Kingston and meet your guy on scene, and then we can cover your call, or vice versa?
Okay.
That, I think that's the, and, and as far as this regionalization, we're not looking to put a ladder truck from Brentwood in our station, okay? We're looking, I think the, the plan is to get manpower, that's what's lacking, manpower.
You know, that's a great point Bill's bringing up, and thank you, perfect segue. Cause one of the researches that I did, it's called the Black Ride Along Program, and it's taken off nationwide. This is almost word for word what Chief Seaman and I used to do. Um, it used to be set up that if Kingston had a call going on, and it sounded like they need help, my guys could go over there and just help out, even though they weren't to them, same thing. And Bill's come over several times. Bill's an awesome guy, I love him, by the way. He comes over, he's helped us out once in a while, when everybody gets a call, and the only agreement we had was if. You can be my town in your gear and it gets damaged, I'm gonna replace it. My guy comes to you and helps you out, dig gears, damage, you're gonna replace it. Now, I talked to PrimeX yesterday, I had this conversation at another meeting I was at, with PrimeX yesterday. And I said, well, some people are telling me if the tones don't go up, they're not officially requested, you're not, you're not covered under insurance. That's us shit, yes you are, according to PrimeX, you have a, you have a countywide mutual aid agreement. Your tones don't have to trip, your pager doesn't have to go off, you don't have to be called. As long as the two chiefs have an agreement that you're welcome to do that, you are one hundred percent covered by PrimeX, no questions asked.
I know what you're saying, what you're saying.
So.
No, I'm just saying. But, but to answer that question, Newton has sent its paramedics to other communities without being dispatched. Newton has gone to East Kingston and met their one person and put an EMT in their area.
No, no, and we've done, we've done.
What I'm trying to say is, we've already done that.
We've done that with Kingston many times, and Kingston has managed well. Maybe we need to, and I guess part of my personal heartache on this was. If there was a problem, I would have liked to have been talking to before he, cause we can make adjustments. Now, I have since made some adjustments to my run card. Did not blackball Kingston, I take Kingston out of my run card at all because they're on my first line for everything, we get along great. Graham and I get along great, don't ever, don't want anybody to misunderstand that. But what I did do is, um, split my town up into four quarters, cause Billy and I had it set up that. I'll go to Kingston for everything that they have, Kingston comes to me for everything that I have. Well, if that was putting an undue burden on Kingston, I've now split my town up. Into different quadrants, and so now Exeter will take part of it, Kingston will take part of it, Newton will take part of it. So, um, yeah, if there was a problem, we should have addressed that, uh, face-to-face. Water under the bridge, it doesn't matter at this point. Uh, but what I'm saying is, that, what Bill is asking about, and what Chief Seaman and I used to do, is exactly what's going on, it's taken off nationwide. It's called the Ride Along Program, and it works phenomenal, um, head team of the department solution. Okay, so, um, but I think that they hold up, cause I've talked to some chiefs, and they say, yeah, but if you just show up. If somebody blast out, just shows up in their town, they don't want to run, they get hurt, who's, who's at fault? I mean, who's in charge? It's as if they were called, PrimeX understands, you have a countywide mutual aid agreement. You do not have to be told to request it, you can go.
Those that don't may know me, I won't bore you with my resume, but I assure you, this is right on my hour. There are multiple fire departments in the state that use a live-in program, specifically in the Lake Region Community College area. Those people live in the firehouses for the semester, they get maybe a small stipend. And they are, some, some places have two or three people, they are the crew for the semester. They are told, you know, you have to do X amount of hours of coverage. They live there, they do their homework, they eat, they do all that stuff, they're part of the department. Um, they come back the next year, so the next year they might have a new person and another person that was there the year before. If this is a staffing issue, which is really what it boils down to, is a staffing issue. Sandow. I won't say we don't have staffing issues, but we have a hundred more hours of people in our station today than we did a year ago. And part of that was, my concept is two points. Part of that is, fire chiefs, selectmen, we have a very strong board in Sandow. And we've made a conscious decision, we're going to tell the town what it needs, what we need to fund and run the town correctly. It is their choice if they wanna vote for it or not. From a fire department perspective, the town has never said no to us. We went in, added last year with forty hours of Purdean coverage, we probably should have done a hundred and twenty. We realized that pretty quick, and went and did another sixty this year. They've never said no to us. You need to sell it to your town, tell them, this is what we need to run. That's it. You can choose to pay it or not, you get the level of service you're willing to pay for. But from a staffing perspective, there's no reason why towns down here, although it's a little bit of a ride to Lake Region Community College, couldn't do a live-in program. Or find that person or two people from your community that might need an apartment. Give them free apartment in their firehouse, let them stay there. And obviously you have to have an M U, it's pretty clear, um, desires on what the workload would be for that house, but, for that apartment. But there's no reason why people can't do that. There's plenty of kids that want to get out of their homes, wanna be in the fire service, and, and, and. I know two or three in our department right now that would do it. They, they're gonna pretend they're career firefighters for however long they live in there.
Is there a local program that?
There's no, nobody does it around here.
There's like a local community college or?
Lake Region Community College does the fire service, fire science program, so that's why the department's around there.
That was one of the other anecdotes that I chased on, was, there's a lot of departments having huge success with live-in, you just let these people live in your station for free. They're there, but they're the crew while they're there. And honestly, they're afraid we're not, especially if they didn't think they'd like to be having people live in the station for free. Um, I can tell you where your town attorney said.
But that town attorney is wrong. If he says that it can't happen, he's wrong, because it happens all over the country, specifically in eight or ten departments in the state.
Plus, my department's not set up to have.
Certainly, that's a bad part, you would need to do that, but.
Southern Maine, Southern Maine has a.
Southern Maine has a huge one, yeah. So I mean, there's, it's a staffing thing, and I think all of us can agree. If we have a building fire. To, to Ed's point, right, we don't get five guys in a truck anymore, but guys come out of, guys come around here. The problem is for all these departments is the EMS department. Hundred percent, it's, it's, you know, that milli that you go to seven times a week, people get frustrated. We're lucky those of us that have Trinity, cause I don't wanna say I don't care, but someone's always going, right, to all of my med calls, and I'm the EMS captain in Sandow, so. Someone's always going to my med calls. It's not the end of the world if it doesn't happen. Conveniently cardiac arrest and calls like that, we get people out, we don't have a problem with that. But if it's a staffing issue specifically in one community, I agree with the chief, it should always start, maybe the board should have directed the chief to. Conduct these meetings amongst chiefs, but, um, there's no reason why you couldn't start live-in programs. We have people legitimately that don't live in town, that are on our department, that want to do duty nights at night. They stay at the station. They're okay with that. We're okay with that. Something's worse.
Okay. One thing I wanted to ask.
So Chris Kooten, Flashdown Chief. Probably get back my head right around what problem we're trying to solve, cause each community has a different sets of problem. We don't have a staffing problem. Our community stepped up and was spending staffing twenty-four hours a day. So, what, what are you trying to solve with the regionalization? Does it something that Kingston's having a problem with, or is it a perceived issue that I just think all these communities have?
So. I recognize Kingston's issue is staffing. But what we're looking at is, you know, trying to pool resources as well, like buying power. And, you know, when there is one guy in a firehouse here, or one guy in a firehouse here, and you need to get two guys together to go, that's a great example. The other thing is, you know, the Purdean thing has become really big, and, you know, maybe there's a set rate amongst the towns, so. You get paid twenty bucks in Newton, you get paid twenty bucks in Kingston, you get paid twenty bucks in Flashdown. So we're not poaching each other's people. I'm, again, I'm just throwing this out there, but. The biggest thing is just to get everybody in a room and just kinda work through some of these issues, like, you know, the live-in thing. That wasn't something I was aware of, you know?
I don't think you're ever, you're never gonna get a regional favor, because what Sandow can bear is not what Newton can bear, or Danville can bear. I'm next door to get to Danville, and I, I, we have never poached or been poached by Danville. Our people come to us, they know what we pay. They know Steve Kay's quadruple what we pay. But we are still many years behind everybody else. We still have a big bunch of people that are there because they wanna be there, not because they wanna turn. We have those as well. Uh, but one or two in particular, and, and those two, I recognize one of them, when he becomes twenty-six and has to pay a real job in insurance. He's gonna stop running for us and the other towns that he worked for, because he's gonna need a real job. But we're back for him, we took five people on the last month. Culture.
One thing that I've seen, so I'm leaving here, I started in January twenty twenty, just in time, and then it's gone off, right? What a, what a good time to change jobs, uh, before that I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express. One thing that I've seen in this region is departments are trying to do too much with the resources they have, and they get their eyes focused on the money. They see that ambulance, like, oh, that makes money. You can't look at public safety as a money-making endeavor. It's, it's never gonna be that way. You can help offset costs with an ambulance insurance-free vehicle system. But if your community can only pay for two or three people, don't expect that community to have a fire department and an ambulance transport department. That's not gonna happen. You know, and that might be where analysis worked for Kingston, but maybe you give up to ambulance transport, you see Trinity, you can take on another account, or maybe get another ambulance district. And now you're asking, you have to focus just on fire response and first response to medical costs. People don't like to talk about that, cause like, oh, we're gonna lose two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Okay, now, are you trying to make money, or are you trying to provide public safety? They don't go anywhere.
One of the biggest issues, and we had looked at that, but the way it was set up now, you know, the closest Danville surface I believe was in Amson. And the response time was approximately twenty-five minutes versus what we were turning in at the time, it was around seven minutes. So, not looking at from a money-making perspective, but just a response time. You know, the, the first time someone doesn't make it, you know, from a heart attack because they got their tendons too late.
So they got ambulance in Amson, they got another ambulance in Hampstead, their third ambulance comes out of Hable. We're trying to get a third ambulance this year to wrap here, just because the call volume has changed a little bit. Now, that model, the fire department still goes, but they're going on fire, but they're multi, they're toolbox, they can respond to any type of call from the fire. You're not just focused on ambulance, and you have a structured fire, vice versa. So you're still having the paramedics and EMTs start here in thirty-four minutes. You know, after lunchtime, I think it's four and a half minutes of Flashdown. We're putting EMTs next to the emergency department patient care, waiting for Trinity. It's because Trinity's responding to the calls, that means we're not going at all. Right, and that, if we ever get away from that model, and I'll be honest, I'm honest with our selectmen, if we ever got away from that model, we would have a fire bunch working. We cannot provide ambulance transport and fire protection with only three people on it.
So that, that's what I was gonna say is, if you don't currently have a staffing problem now in your community, which I think most of us can safely do, whether it's Eric from Exeter, you know, recalls, I hear regents all.
Good on Exeter.
Is everybody on it? So if, if we don't currently, you guys chiefs have a staffing problem, you may. So, you know, Newton, the Flashdown, you know, Flashdown five times a day. I'm assuming you guys are from Denver, cause it's two years away, but what happens when Trinity starts to charge me, because they can't staff me. You know, uh, I don't remember Flashdown, Newton I heard the other day, Trinity was on, I think it was, Trinity was on bail.
We transported plus.
Right, you, you transported a lot at home, but.
Correct, it's my job to look into the future in case Trinity does drop out in two years.
Sure.
So where?
And, and we are, and I'm sure the same thing, the Flashdown, the Danville, and everything, we're already looking into that, if Trinity goes. You know, we, we have our plan B. We're not gonna come out without plan B, but we have our plan B.
I'm ready to develop, I'm ready to try. Looking at how many trams there is, looking at this in our town, looking at what the cost increases, gonna hire more people, y'all said that. But we can't go with the pressure we have now. And I would be foolish to tell the town that, oh, if Trinity goes away, we'll just keep doing it with those three people, we won't worry about it. That, that, that's. Not long yet. And unfortunately, you see that here in the, in the state that I came from, it's something the same way. It's sometimes the fire departments get too focused on that ambulance, and they forget about the consequences on the front door of the building.
So in Sandow, much like these guys, that's what we're doing. We had a nineteen ninety-five ambulance, it came from a, uh, uh, a, a culture of, we don't transport. I probably became the EMS captain, certainly got involved as, as an officer fifteen years ago. Very quickly, I started driving along that point. If we're not getting that cloud, we need to be, that's going to the wayback machine, but we need to start towards transporting. Fast forward, new chief, new ambulance, two hundred and forty thousand dollar ambulance, built specifically for the fact that I envision at some point, with thirty days' notice, Trinity can say, we're out of here. It happened to us once before, with, with AMI, thirty days' notice, we're out of here. We would not have a place in Sandow to handle that, even in an emergency case, we couldn't do it. I've worked really hard with the chief, the new chief, walking the chief. We're in a position now where our culture is, Trinity has two ambulances, my guy really Hampstead, Alex, Ross, and Taylor. If we're not getting that Hampstead ambulance, we need to be ready to move and start moving. In the old days, we'd sit there and wave, hold hands, and we have great clipboard notes because we had twenty-five minutes to talk to them about it. Nowadays, we don't do that anymore. We're in the point, Trinity called us tomorrow and said, we're dead, we're out. We would be able to handle it ourselves, probably in concert with Danville, cause they'd be in the same boat, and Hampstead, and Flashdown, and six, in Newton, the six towns would be able to at least handle it. Nowadays, we don't do that anymore. We're in the point, Trinity called us tomorrow and said, we're dead, we're out. We would be able to handle it ourselves, probably in concert with Danville because they'd be in the same boat and Hampstead and Plastow, Hampstead and Newton, the six towns would be able to at least handle it on an ad hoc basis until we can get another, uh, another, another service, right? Anybody that's been doing it for a long time, we never used to do ambulance. Twenty, twenty-five years ago, fire departments started to use the ambulance to put staffing in the station. And that is now coming around. For those of us that didn't do it, we're good. For those that did get that, relied on that ambulance revenue to put staffing in the fire station, it's now coming around to bite them and button out because you can't keep up with the ambulance service without more people. And you can't have more people because you're a fire department. It doesn't, your primary mission is not necessarily to run the ambulance. So it's come full circle.
So if, if there was, if Trinity says they stand down or else they're gonna cancel the five towns whatever, in two years, would you then look at regionalizing? Because Sandown, I, I assume most towns here have five towns. Your selectmen are gonna say, hey, it's six hundred thousand dollars, go hire four in the whole town.
The first thing I would do would tell him and get the six chiefs together, figure out a plan, and then we put out an RFP. And at the end of the day, I find it difficult to believe that Trinity will pull out. The New Hampshire towns are a money maker for their payer mix.
Yeah, but do you interrupt you for a second? Candy just went through this with AMI. AMI can't get staffed and their primary goal is Manchester. There are Candies and no.
So money schedule.
And they, they walked away from it.
So in that scenario, Manchester, AMR never funded a truck specifically for Candy. The truck was part of the Manchester trucks. Our two ambulances from Trinity, further contract, are not deployable for any reason but our six towns, period. Once in probably the last ten years, Trinity covered them. And even that, they shouldn't have done further contract. So our payer mix, if you look at the six towns, our payer mix pays for those two ambulances. Not enough probably for third one. The call volume might be, I would argue the call volume might be.
I'm still throw over, man.
Chris and I disagree though. I don't actually want that third ambulance because I wanna force my people, and I'm not gonna stand away, but I wanna force my people to do those third ambulance transports so that they have the skills and experience when Trinity does back out. But this is a, this is a, for everybody, it's, it's a funding issue. You need the ambulance to get the people, but you need the people to do fire stuff too.
So our ambulance cannot fund anything we do as staff. So we make close to four hundred thousand dollars a year in billing and all that does is half, the resident billing goes into my taxes into the general fund and the non-resident billing goes into replacement. So I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, we've, we've never had five ambulances here. John Myerle has been here for forty-plus years and we've always run our own.
Yeah, I'm not saying everybody. I'll give you an example. So right now, you got three on duty right now? So two of them on ambulance.
Yep.
All three of them on ambulance.
Two on ambulance, one on engine, but a couple of the guys weren't.
And then I'm, I'm not complaining because as well we're here, but we're setting up for Plastow and motor vehicle accident. So if you all worry about the ambulance transport, you wouldn't worry about the mutual aid that's coming to your mind. Make sense?
Yeah, except for we go out and we have mutual aid teams sometimes.
No, I don't understand. You don't have staffing. It is a staffing issue because you're committing staffing to that ambulance that you could commit to fire department. Fire department. I think Chris, you're going to mutualize Plastow. You're not going to support Plastow because his crew's on ambulance. Becoming really, really fine. Where his crews, they would say his crews. You know, you know, here, I'm not saying that for happening, but if you haven't been here, call here for an alarm activation or motor vehicle accident.
That's Plastow. Other towns, and we're not mentioning any names, and it's not a bad thing, but other towns do call us and call, you know, we've called, uh, the towns for fire alarm activation for Miss Betty Group at seven P M. and seven chess game. So I guess, you know, looking into regionalizing more and regionalizing is a broad term, right? I'm not looking to sell my trucks on eBay. I'm not looking to have Ron who pays for my ladder truck. Our stations aren't paying for us. Nobody has to pay for that. Um, but if there's a way that, again, maybe it's just automatic tone. Maybe it's just, you know, and Ed and I have talked about it, uh, you know, if we can share the staffing to, to meet the needs.
I think it's a, um, I think you're onto it there. I think it's a, a better phrase, it would be a staffing issue than a regionalization issue because I think that's what's getting everybody's hair up with regionalization. Uh, it's a staffing issue. I honestly believe that that can be handled, um, more locally. Certainly include the selectmen that they let you know. I think, I think that's appropriate. Let's let them know what's going on. Uh, but I think the departments can handle that and as Billy was speaking before we left, uh, your dad and former chief, we used to share people a lot more than we do now. We just don't. Uh, some people didn't like that. It was kinda stepping on territories. It was considered cowboyy, but it's not called that anymore. It's not, it's just the way it, it, it has to be that way to help each other relative to the staffing issues. Uh, I, I, I really didn't where it is. I mean, to chief's credit, um, Newton, Plastow, Brentwood, with most of us, I put everybody on I am responding. Look at I am responding. We can see it. So I can look, for the click of a button, and know exactly who's sitting where. I know who's sitting in Brentwood for firefighters and people. I know who's sitting in Kingston. I know who's sitting in Newton. They know who's sitting with where. I, anyway, in the, in the area that I am responding, I've showed everybody how to share the information on the phone. So if ALS isn't available and I need a medic, I can see where there's one and I can call appropriately. Rockingham can see it too, but they're social advantage themselves if they're not actually reading that. So I think, um, I think, I think meeting is important. I was pissed off at the meeting. It would happen the way it happened, but I think the meeting itself was important to have. It's just how it got there. Uh, but I think it's some valuable information. Uh, and I think if it's, I think the first step in this has to be more open communication between the departments, to be honest with you. Don't, don't take it as a, a burst of ego or a problem because you're telling Kingston, hey, you know what? I'm gonna put anybody around the next couple of days. Can you let your people know in case they hear something to slide over? I mean, that's not a bad thing. I mean, we should, we gotta be more open than that and, and be willing to err. I mean, there's people sitting in that back over right now. They're all just chomping at the bit. I'm hoping they wouldn't, wouldn't speak up, but I think it's a problem that can be mitigated, not a hundred percent, but certainly a big chunk of it if we communicate better. And not be afraid to call or let somebody know they should need the help.
I, to be honest with you, I don't know where that would start because we used to do that thirty years ago. There's several times that happened. We had one guy on, hey, you want me to come over and drive today? If you come over and ride, I'll cover you.
You know.
It makes the worst of that, you know? I remember that was spot. I remember that was spot, but that should be iron made.
If you were.
Truck and dang the road.
I, I know I said what I was gonna say, I thought I needed you. There, there were some communities that do that. Well, if you were listening to the radio yesterday or the day before during Amesbury's three alarm strikes a fire, you heard them calling Sacman. That's their name for me. They call me Sacman, see Ghost Area Chief and it's a running joke because I go everywhere the wheels are around. Contrary to popular belief, I do not go to a town that I haven't been asked and invited to prior to going there. And if you hear something's going on and something's happening, it sounds like you might need help, please do not wait for a call. Show up.
Tell them, I'm on. Definitely five men.
Yeah, I gotta be my name. Um, so I think the chief's in the area and the group will tell you that, but, um, if you have open communication with the chiefs and people in the area, it's, it's okay. I mean, like I say, it's just, I think if you mitigate a lot of problems, a lot of the concerns, like, uh, like I said, your dad's mobile media, he's, he'll have a car accident, he'll call and he'll see that I've only got one or two people on and it just buzzes over to see if we need a hand. If we do, fantastic, he's going. If we don't, he, he turns around and leaves. Have I done the same thing with you? I'll come over, say they need a hand. No, but thanks for talking about it. Great. And I turn around and I leave. It's, um, these are the kind of things that are in service to me, student. And I, I agree that there are staffing issues out there because how do we address the staffing issue? And I would call it DAPL and I would call it regionalization.
What I would say is, I don't need an introduction. I need Kevin St. James. I think most people know me here. Know I don't wanna be a chief or anything. Um, but let me just tell my story. Right? Maybe the wrong word was regionalization, right? But there is a problem that we're all having and it is staffing, right? Ray became chief and I was a selectman and I started in Kingston and he came forward and saying, we cannot get the ambulances out the door anymore, all right, in a reasonable timeframe. And he talked with the selectmen and we saw the value in it. And then suddenly we went round the clock twenty-four seven in Kingston. Now it's becoming more of a problem. He can't get those per diems anymore. He's just not there. All the towns are hiring. So I said, you know what? I'll, I'll do a per diem shift once in a while. It's my town. I'd like to help my town. And I started back in March. I took two nights and the idea was I'll take two nights a month just to help them out. I can't even tell you how many calls I've gone on the last, the last two months because there's no one responding. The ambulance is going everywhere. Now, I'll tell you my personal story. In my fifteen years of fire service, there was two times I had a clot issue at my house. And my choice was call the fire department and it was a call department and wait twenty minutes while my wife could put me in a car and ride me to Exeter Hospital. And that's what I chose. Right? Because I know you need service when you need service, right? And it's getting to a point now where we as selectmen started looking because the ambulance isn't there anymore. That, that, we felt saw value in putting two firefighters in the station round the clock, right? And during the daytime, there's three others in the station. We're concerned the ambulance isn't there anymore to answer for our residents because we know the timeframe would have to happen, right? And I'm not here to throw anyone under the bus. Y'all chief, everyone else, I didn't know we needed a hurt feelings report or anything like that. But Ray did approach other people, say, hey, how can we talk it? And nothing was said because we as select board, Ellie here, Bill, Chuck wasn't on at the time, but we saw what's happening and the ambulance is out and it's not really here for our residents that we're paying for. So we've been challenging him. How can we make this better? What can we do? And roadblocks were put up. And I'll be the first to say, the mind is like a parachute. It only works if it's open. This was a discussion. That's all it was. And we figured, why not just talk to all the towns? All right? I heard, you know, we have the audacity to ask Exeter. Well, you know what? Our ambulance is going to Exeter as well and Exeter's coming here. But we figured, let's talk to all the neighbors and see what's going on and how we do it. Then I get this letter from Seacoast Chiefs and I'm like, this makes sense. How about if you take the politics out of it and the egos and everything else and look at a study? Guess what? As selectmen, we have OPA funds. Every town has OPA funds right now. As Bill calls it Santa Claus money that we would never have. And we could probably get a consultant to come in and take a look and how can we help each other? You know, hate me or whatever, but it's like, I know there's one person in this town, one person, let's put those people together, however we gotta put them together, but let's have the conversation reasonably. And like you said, it was tried and roadblocks were put up. So however it happens, the selectmen did jump in, all right? That's not on him. We forced his hand. But let's sit in a room and let's talk about those that wanna be involved in it. Great. Those that don't, oh, well, that's okay too.
Couple of things. Um, it's a staffing issue. I agree. Um, everybody's aware of it. There is a couple of comments, like if there's one person working a, a duty shift in Brentwood, that person's really not any good. He should be maybe moved to Kingston or East Kingston and, and bolster that crew. That's absurd. That's absurd. If one person in Kingston, I mean, in Brentwood, even if he's alone, does a, is a value there because if we, if we share the staffing personnel we have, like we talked about, that would solve the problem. Okay? Because the one person, the example I use is if there's an accident in town, I'm gonna go first and I'm gonna evaluate the scene. If there's one person in Brentwood that can get to the EMS call, they can do CPR, they can evaluate the scene, they can have eyes on it and do it. Saying that person is better suited or more valuable because he gets down as a third person on an ambulance in another town and then they can respond back to that town. No, that's, that's absurd. That, that's not okay. And personally, and I want to apologize to you before I say this, uh, fake man to man face to face, um, don't you think it's a conflict of interest to be, have your subordinate be your boss as well? You're a selectman. Yeah. Well, do you realize that? I've had people that ran for selectman's office, but I made it happen. I didn't agree with you. I think a legal absence for my fire department, as long as you're gonna be a selectman. You can't be, I can't have one of my subordinates who's also my boss.
I'm trying to help the residents at Kingston.
All right, can I just, so, so, you know, listening to all this and, you know, being involved across the country and stuff, you know, regionalization is a big word. You know, regionalization is merger, there's consolidation, and those are all scary words. If you're talking shared resources, I think that that's a different discussion than, than jumping from A to Z, regionalization and saying, okay, let's, let's make one big fire department. Like even, you know, you guys are talking, I think it's about fixing the problems, not recreating the, the, the wheels. You know, mutual aid in itself is, needs to be mutual. If, if I have a fire department, I go to Newton ten times and they come to me ten times, that's mutual aid because we, fire service will not exist without mutual aid. It was set up around fire scenes because if I have a fire, I may need ten communities to come to me on that one fire. I may go to ten communities, but the numbers balance out. When they start balancing out, that's when community leadership gets frustrated because they don't balance out because one community's funding another community. No matter how you call it, they're funding another community. And EMS kind of exacerbates that a little, a little bit because you're not having multiple people come in. So looking at shared resources, there's a lot of shared resources across the country that you can look at. Without regions, you can just keep your own identity. You keep your own board. You could make your own decisions, but share those resources to fix those problems. If you put a working group together and said, what are our problems? You know, and each community could, could lay out what, what their problems are because there may be a fix for, you know, you may have a different problem than him, but you, you could sit down and fix them all. That probably would reap the most benefit the quickest. If you're talking realization, even if you do a study, you're talking a couple of years. You're gonna have a, from the sounds of it, you're gonna have a price on your hands during that period of time. So, you know, fixing the little problems along the way with, with shared resources. With that being said, if there's any community that's not properly funding near public safety, it's gonna show up and that's not fair. It's just not fair. So at some point, that has to be looked at, whether our community's a burden to another community or not.
Somebody said that, I think the right entities are gonna fund the department.
Yeah, they, 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 because, because there is the, you know, there is some savings in economy of scale and shared resources, but there's no fluke. I mean, that's just the, the truth of it. And, but shared resources, I think, is a way that fire service has to work and, and in these times, you just have to look expanding that a little bit more. Uh, and whether that's staffing or, you know, whether everybody has two ambulances or whatever, but you have to look at that. But, but regionalization is a, is a big move compared to talking about shared resources.
I agree.
Now, that may get there. I mean, you know.
It may, you never know with five or ten years on the road, my brother. It may end up being a necessity.
One, one last thing. I know I said, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, he's, he's, he's better than me.
I just, I, I just can't help myself and, and Perry has kinda taken two-thirds of my thunder because he's absolutely right. Eric Wilkins, chief of the Exeter Fire Department. I applaud the town of Kingston and I respect you for what you're doing because Exeter has been where Kingston believes they are today. As assistant chief and the chief of the department over the last twenty years, we've been asked to contact towns that surrounded us that we believe were abusing initial response assets. Mut, mutual aid's not the problem. Took us an hour to get to the elephant in the room. Took us an hour to finally get to the point where it's a staffing issue. You believe you don't have staff to do what you need to do. And I understand. We just recently had to hire the seven people in the town of Exeter to handle our call volume to the level that we feel we can afford. We're gonna try to do two to three calls and beyond that, we're still gonna reach out to Kingston on the east, on the west and North Hampton on the east. It's what we have to do. We're all faced in that. But if we didn't have a staffing problem, if you put an adult and had people apply to the town of Kingston and could fill your jobs, we would not be here today. It's my personal belief. No different than your town, or your town, we would not be here today. So what we have is your perceived problem with staffing. And I'm not gonna argue how this was written or who received the note. I was duly notified. Um, young men and women that want to become firefighters and EMS providers full-time will do so. You can believe we're poaching. You can believe there are lucrative bonuses out there, about twenty-one dollars and ninety cents an hour is not a lucrative bonus to be a career firefighter on the Exeter Fire Department. We have people leaving the town of Exeter to go out of the towns because at fourteen, sixteen and eighteen calls a day for six or seven people, the volume is too high. And our town does not believe they can afford to spend another dollar on public safety. They probably will in time. So looking at the staffing issue, I think there are several models that you can look at, um, but singularly, it's interesting that there are six towns around you that find it beneficial to utilize a private ambulance service for that first ambulance out and then backfill with your resources. Because you're never gonna get away with not spending money on public safety. You're gonna need a couple of firefighters. If you choose the number, be three, then it's three for fire-related motor vehicle accidents on the one twenty-five and everything else, but.